In that case, I am going to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Turner, you're so good at leading us in the pledge. Would you do the honors, please?
I'd be happy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Sue, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Bagby?
Present. May we have a report out on a closed session?
Yes, Mayor. The City Council considered labor negotiations under closed session. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none, we will move on to agenda review.
Mayor, no changes to the agenda tonight?
Thank you. Then we'll move on to public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take actions on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must go to the podium when advised by the mayor and speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is authorized by the mayor. Would anyone like to come forward and speak on an item that is not on this evening's agenda? All right, well, seeing none, we're going to move right along to proclamations and presentations. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite our former interim police chief, Robert Bob Stewart, to come down to the dais and be able to have the opportunity to present him with a proclamation. And Mayor, if you'd like to, you're welcome to read it, or if you'd like me to, I can read it.
Would you read it for us?
All right. It's with great delight that I get to read the proclamation tonight, recognizing and acknowledging Police Chief Bob Stewart for his numerous contributions and dedicated service to the community of Cloverdale. Whereas Robert Bob Stewart was hired by the City of Cloverdale as a consultant on August 9th, 2017, to assist with the design of a new police station and provide the specialized skills necessary to assist the city with the project. And whereas Bob Stewart was promoted to acting police chief in January 2018. And whereas Bob Stewart was designated interim police chief by the city manager on August 13th. And whereas Chief Stewart delivered quality work product for the city by developing and implementing an updated animal control services agreement and Cloverdale healthcare district agreement for the city. Whereas Chief Stewart enhanced the safety of our community by implementing the use of Narcan that every officer now carries. And whereas Chief Stewart conducted public surveys, created business watch, and held a public workshop to address the impacts of homelessness on the Cloverdale business community. And whereas Chief Stewart was responsible for making critical updates to the city's emergency preparedness infrastructure, including installation of a battery backup system for police repeater system and manual transfer switch for the repeater site, and coordinated the new portable radio system upgrade for Public Works. And whereas Chief Stewart was instrumental in updating the application process of recruiting a new police chief. Whereas Chief Stewart developed an updated staffing program for the Cloverdale Police Department and implemented an administrative lieutenant position within the Police Department. Whereas Chief Stewart laid the groundwork for the design of a new public safety police facility for the city. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby express a sincere appreciation to Chief Stewart for his numerous contributions to the City of Cloverdale and the Cloverdale Police Department during his tenure as interim police chief from 2018 to 2019. Be it further proclaimed that our mayor, Melanie Bagby, along with our fellow council members, do hereby acknowledge the dedication and significant contributions of Chief Stewart on behalf of the citizens of Cloverdale. And thank you, Chief, personally, for your dedication and your leadership. It was of significant value for me, and I know it was of value to our community. And sincerely, thank you.
Yes. Madam Mayor, thank you. If I could get all the members of the Police Department down there to the front. Bob, on behalf of the entire Police Department, would like to present you with this gift as a token of our appreciation for everything that you've put to work here at the Police Department in the past year, certainly being a part of the transition for me. I appreciate it a lot. And hopefully, this is something you'll love. It's got the badge, it's got everything you have here at Cloverdale, so we appreciate everything you did very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was a surprise. I knew I came to the council meeting and would get out of here early, which was fantastic. But...
We have a seat up here for you.
No, that's okay, thank you.
I do miss you sitting next to me, man.
I missed it, too. Maybe I'll come back sometime. So, I just want to thank everybody. The City Council has been just fantastic to work with. You know, the city manager, all of the city staff. You know, this has been a really great experience for me, working in one city for so many years and coming up here and not really knowing how the city operates and who the people are and all those things. It's kind of a lot of unknowns. But I have to say that the City of Cloverdale and their staff, Police Department, all the departments, they work so cohesively together. There's not the infighting that I've seen in past organizations. So, that was a surprise to me, and it was a very nice surprise. No matter what the need was, you went to the person and it was taken care of. So, the support while I was in this position has been amazing. I love Cloverdale. If I wasn't retired, I'd come up here in a second, other than the commute. Eh, not so much. Organization-wise, Police Department means a lot to me. You know, they're my extended family, just as all of you are, but you have a bond, I think, when you're in law enforcement. And all of you mean a tremendous amount to me. All the support that you've given me. There's been a lot of rough times throughout the last couple of years with Chief Kramer's illness and eventual passing, you know, everything that came in between. But the community is in good, good hands with all of you and with the new chief, Jason Ferguson. I know he's going to do just an awesome job. He's going to represent the department well. And I'm just happy to be here, seeing these faces again. And I certainly appreciate the kind words that have been spoken. And thank you, Cloverdale community, for everything, all the support that you've given me while I was here. So, I won't be a stranger. Hopefully, I'll still be, you know, working on a police facility, project two, and, you know, come up for lunch or do something up here, but I don't, certainly don't want to be a stranger. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would any members of the council or staff like to say a few words?
Do you want to go first, yes?
Thank you. Bob, I just want to say thank you for coming up to Cloverdale and helping us in our time of need. And I really appreciated having the opportunity to work with you on the public safety facility. And hopefully, you'll still be involved with that process. So, again, thank you for all the hard work you've done.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this end of the table?
Well, I do want to say thank you because you did take a personal stand and also engage with many other members of the community. And that's all we need, engagement, communication, and hopefully, solutions. Thank you.
It was a pleasure, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun sharing, sharing this side of the dais with you. And you really were an involved member of the community and a leader, the true example of what a leader can be in a small town and how involved you can become. And I really hope that the example was set and will be followed. You will be missed here in Cloverdale, and thank you for every hour that you gave to us during your retirement. Thank you to your wife. I led to believe she's here tonight, maybe? No. Well, thank you. When you see it on YouTube later, thank you to your wife as well for just letting us have you for a little while. Really appreciate everything you did.
Certainly, I've said it before and I'll say it again. I have an enormous amount of respect for all the years you've served your communities in this law enforcement career. And to come back after nine years of retirement and come into an organization and do it again with all the challenges speaks volumes about your commitment to the law enforcement profession. So, I definitely commend you for that, and I appreciate all your assistance as I came in here. So, thank you.
Any other comments from staff? Or I just wanted, just to conclude, I'll just say, thank you so much for your service. You came in at a very difficult time for all of us. We really miss Chief Kramer, and no one could ever replace him. But you know what? You really helped us with a very difficult transition. I'm sorry, I didn't know why I'm crying. I haven't thought about it for a while. And you were really there for us emotionally and as an example of what a real police, a peace officer really is. So, I just really want to thank you. Sorry for crying. But it really does mean a lot. Thank you.
See you at the car show.
Yeah. Car show. There you go. See, it's not goodbye.
For me, it's really, it's just, thanks, Chief, and I don't want to say goodbye because I know we're going to have the opportunity to continue to work together. So, I look forward to seeing you next time. You know, one thing I think we've mentioned a couple of times is that, you know, the chief, all during this, his tenure with the city was actively in the rebuilding process because his home was succumbed to the, you know, 2017 wildfires. And I know it was a challenge to be able to fulfill this role and also deal with, you know, the personal issues of trying to rebuild your home and all the challenges associated with that. So, you know, he also experienced, you know, personal tragedy in his own life, and yet still came back and was able to work great with our team and was a great partner with our senior staff. So, I really appreciate it. Got a lot done.
Thank you again. It's been my pleasure.
Thanks, Chief.
The second item on our proclamations and presentations are another exemplar of exemplary community service, Clean River Alliance. Are they here to accept the proclamation?
Mayor, the Clean River Alliance was unable to make it to tonight to the council. So, we're going to, staff request, we will bring it back for council.
Great, great. Because I'd love to hear from them and get an update on their, on their local work. Okay. Well, then, moving on to our consent calendar, all items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or a member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Would anyone from the council like to remove an item?
Madam Mayor, item number eight, I'd like to see discussed separately. Kami Smook is here to say just a few words on the topic, if you'd be so kind.
Anyone else from council or staff want to pull an item from consent?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item number 10, dealing with the extraction of the rubber mulch in our playgrounds.
Certainly. Okay, so that's eight and 10. Would a member of the public like to come forward and address an item in the consent calendar on its own? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to move forward on the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar minus item number eight and item number 10.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a roll call, Sue?
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item eight. Did you have something for us, Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to give a few moments for Kami. She is in the, she's here with us this evening to speak a little bit about a memorial dog bowl project that she is putting together on behalf of her brother. And Kami, when you're, when you're ready, if you want to come on down and just make sure you state your name for the record, please, and we'd love to hear a little bit about it.
Oh, did I do that out of order?
Yeah, worry about it. You know, you should get in the habit of it, anyway.
I don't know if you guys can hear me. I'm not used to public speaking. So, my name is Kami Smook. I'm a member of Cloverdale, obviously. I'm here to carry on my brother's memory and his love for dogs. On the morning of June 28th, my little brother suffered a fatal asthma attack four months before his 30th birthday and unfortunately, didn't survive. He was a compassionate animal lover. He did volunteer work with canine companions and helped train the puppies to prepare them for their duty of serving the disabled and blind. He was a kid that showed up with strays at the house and begged my dad to let us keep them, particularly dogs. We often had many of them that he took great care of. With his passing, I thought, I can cry in my room for months on end, which some days I still want to do, or I can do something productive with my grief and give back in the way that my brother would really want me to. One morning, I was at Planet Coffee, it was the weekend after his passing, and I was like, gosh, it's really hot outside. Everybody has their dogs. Our community seems to be an enormous companion community where we all have multiple of them. And I'm like, maybe if we had enough bowls, at least in front of the local businesses here where I see them, with water for them, the animals, you know, would be a little bit happier because some of them are like, it's so hot out. So, I went home that day, drove to Western Farm and purchased my first 10 dog bowls, reached out to our community page and was like, hey, I'm just curious if any local businesses would be okay with me putting the bowls out. And remarkably, had so many people reach back to me with such kind regard into it and were like, we want you to bring your bowls. Bring your bowls here, we're totally cool with it. That Friday night live, I walked around, my kids were with my husband, enjoying the jumpy house and food area, and I cried and passed out my bowls. It was so helpful in my grieving, and it's so healing for my family. They couldn't come because some of them are still at a place where they're unable to stop their crying, and I'm trying to just help lead them and be like, we can do it. I thought that doing the bowl project would not only help carry on my brother's memory, but let our community know that we can give back and we can come together when such a terrible tragedy happens. That's what Cloverdale is to me. It's, it's the village and we all help each other, and it's been so helpful with my grief. So, my next step was doing something a little bit more permanent, where the dishes for the kind of area here are lighter, so if somebody's walking and it gets hit, that's okay. It's a little metal bowl, it can be fixed. But at the dog or at the parks, I wanted to do something a little bit more permanent. So, I just want permission for that. I don't, I don't want any, nobody has to pay for it, nobody has to give me anything. My husband has said he'd be happy to help me come up with some kind of prototype that's going to be safe for the public, nobody has to deal with it. I'm happy to do it myself. I just, I just want permission to do it.
Thank you. Any questions or...
Yeah, Tammy, don't leave yet.
Yeah, stick around.
I have a question. You said something more permanent. What do you mean by that?
So, a little concrete bowl is what we were talking about. It's about like 18 inches by maybe 10 inches wide with a concrete base and then a plastic jug that can be removed to fill and then put back on. So, I was thinking maybe every weekend, I can go down, fill it up, and then check it maybe on Wednesdays on my way from, home from work. I come down on weekends with my bike with water jugs to do filling of the bowls for businesses that don't have water available. I know the parks don't have water fixtures at them, so I'm fine bringing bigger jugs to fill them up. Whatever I could do to facilitate so that when we walk around with our companions, there's water available for those who don't have it with them.
I thought all our water parks had drinking fountains, though. Is that not the case?
We do have a, one park that has a dedicated dog watering station. That's at Porterfield Creek. I think most of our parks do have, actually...
They have drinking fountains.
Drinking fountains.
Yeah.
But they're not always convenient for the purposes of, you know, watering, filling up a dog bowl.
Is it awkward to...
Yeah, just the way it kind of fits in there.
And if I could clarify something, just because we have met a couple of times prior to this. When you use the word permanent, you don't mean permanently affixed?
No.
You just mean something a little more heavy?
That won't get kicked over.
Yeah, do you mind just elaborating on that?
Yeah, so I don't mean anything that's drilled into the ground or chained to anything. I just mean something to where if a dog's running by excitedly and wants to drink out of it with their big paws, it won't get spilled over. I have a 10-week-old dog that's got big old feet, and he's a little clumsy, as well as my three-year-old, that love to play in their food bowls and things get knocked over and water gets spilt. And just something that's a little more sturdy and heavier so that if an excited dog comes up to it to drink, it's not going to get knocked over.
Well, yeah, I have a question. Is that something that's allowed, that kind of heavy fixture in the parks? City engineer?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I mean, there's other fixtures in the park that are probably more hazardous, if you want to call it hazardous.
I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have none. I think this has been a wonderful project, and I'm happy that you're here before us. Thank you for the courage.
Thank you.
Is anyone from the public, would anyone from the public like to come forward and ask any questions or make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council and just say, any other comments from council members? I just, I was really happy to see this because I think we have four out of five dog owners up here on the City Council. And I lived in Sausalito for five years, and they had a memorial to Sally Stanford, who was a lady of questionable repute but admired nonetheless by the community. And she got, and she was an ardent dog lover and had a, they have a great little fountain down by the ferry where they have a people drinking fountain and then a dog drinking fountain. So, yeah, it's, and so are you the ones, are you the one who bought all of the stainless steel bowls that are already around town? Yeah, great.
Yeah, that was my first batch I did.
We use them at least every couple of walks.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, unless there's any other discussion?
I would love to make a motion on this, Mayor, when it's appropriate.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement with Kami Smook for a pilot memorial dog bowl program in the City of Cloverdale.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter? And Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And thanks for doing this. And you are a really good public speaker, so don't let anybody tell you that you're not.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we are moving on to then item 10.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I spoke with Kevin earlier today to give him a heads up that I was going to pull this item. And the only reason I'm pulling it is just to get it officially in the record that Cal Recycle is once again offering the rubber tire chips to any municipality that would like to use them in their playgrounds. And we're going through significant expense to have them removed, and here they are still offering it. And, you know, I just wanted on the record that they're offering it again without any indemnification, without any studies or report to show that it's non-toxic. Is that correct, Kevin, or...
Correct.
Did you want to say a few words on that so that we've got it in the records?
Well, I think that we want to get it on the record so that if any future reimbursement scenarios that we pursue with Cal Recycling, that we're sort of putting it on the record that they're still offering this to cities, as Councilmember Walter said.
Any other comments or questions?
I mean, I just find it ironic, all the heat that Cal Recycle is taking and they're still pushing this product out there.
We'd like to make one comment.
Certainly.
It was interesting to me also that when I was checking on this, a lot of cities are going to the poured rubber because of the balance. And the poured ones actually are made out of entirely tires, period. So, exactly the same product that we have in there right now. And a lot of cities are going to that.
Minus the dust.
Yeah. Well, until it gets ripped up a little bit, then you get the dust, too.
Well, would someone like to move the item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to do that. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution 2019, resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving an agreement with Anderson Excavating and Backhoe for the removal and replacement of rubber mulch installed at four city parks in the amount not to exceed $59,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I'll second.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Thank you. Going to move on to communications. There were several pieces from various senders that I include in the packet as well as some from Councilmember Cruz. Was there any communication on those, or any other comments or questions on those items?
Yes. I want to make sure that the communication dated July 8th is included in the packet. It was addressed to both you, Mayor Bagby and I. It's in regards to fireworks. It's from Iranjana Hartzarati.
I'm just not finding it right away, sorry.
It was not included on the last one?
Which one does it look like?
It's...
We got it? Okay.
Yeah, we got it.
I think, yeah, I was copying it, I just wanted to make sure it was in the packet.
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I also have a new communication from Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, yeah, great. Any questions about any of the other correspondence included? Okay, great, all right. Any questions from the public? All right, well, seeing none, we will move on to item number 11, League California Cities' Redwood Empire Division. Did you want to cover that? What's the action that we need to take on that, David?
The action is really to receive the communication.
Okay. And that's also from, from the communications packet?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, any questions from me on the Redwood Division meeting that Marta and I attended? Okay, all right, seeing none, we will move on to new business and a presentation by Management Partners on the Long-Term Financial Forecast Model Prepared for the City of Cloverdale.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm delighted today to introduce both Bob Leland and Rick Rivera from Management Partners. A little bit of background regarding Management Partners. They're a firm that has a very strong background and expertise in preparing and assisting cities with financial forecasts. One of the cities that they assisted was the City of Stockton when they were going through, you know, major bankruptcy proceedings and were able to prepare a budget model that addressed, you know, Wall Street, which is, you know, no small undertaking. The team prepared a proposal for us to prepare a long-term financial forecast that we could then use to model the city's baseline revenues and expenses going forward. This work was... This work was one of the council's top budget goals for the current fiscal year, which was to, you know, complete the fiscal financial model and develop financing strategies to support the long-term fiscal outlook for the city. Really, what you're going to hear tonight is the first part of that budget goal is to complete the fiscal financial model. And just kind of speak to that for a second. There's really some key aspects to being, to preparing this type of model for the council's consideration. One, I think it really helps with transparency, you know, clearly identifying, you know, what the assumptions are in the model and trying to improve credibility and communication with the council around what's our true fiscal condition of our city. Also, one of my goals in particular is to help the council be disciplined fiscally on to understand what, you know, we sometimes in local government will take a kind of a wishful look at our revenue growth and make decisions based on that. And the goal is really to, you know, forecast our revenues as realistically as we can based on, you know, good assumptions. And I know both Bob and Rick will talk to that. Also, I think it serves to be a real early warning system and take a look, again, as because we're looking, you know, somewhat forward-looking, to reveal some trends that you may want to be cognizant of, particularly relative to our future expenses, but also our future revenues, so you can start crafting appropriate solutions to address both of those situations, you know, and so we're not caught, you know, in a crisis. We're kind of trying to anticipate and respond accordingly. One, I think the other key advantages of doing a financial forecast like this is to, you know, really promote sustainability in terms of your decision-making and, you know, encourage solutions to issues that are going to be more fiscally sustainable and, you know, promote long-term sound budgeting. And ultimately, it's a tool that we can use to help facilitate, you know, a living budgeting document. You know, we see the budget as this paper-bound document, but really, it's a living document that we adjust and modify on a, you know, week, a daily, weekly, monthly, semi-annual basis to reflect, you know, the current situation. So the forecast will kind of help us with that. So again, joining us tonight are Bob and Rick. Bob has, you know, over, I think, 35 years in experience in municipal finance, has served a number of years as a finance director, and his presentation was first provided to staff and then to the Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee. And just a early warning, it's a little shocking when the kind of forecast is revealing. And I think it's important because it's a call to action on maybe some action steps that this council may want to take. What we're asking tonight, the recommendation is for council to receive the presentation. You know, some options for council are to, you know, ask the, our consulting team here to, you know, modify the model that may reflect assumptions that are different from what they analyzed. Or, you know, of course, provide alternative direction based on, you know, what you see tonight in terms of the presentation. Ultimately, we anticipate, again, this is going to be the first step in looking at other options to address some of the issues and concerns that I think were revealed by the work that the team at Management Partners prepared. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Bob and Rick.
All right. David, thank you very much. Mayor and council members, I'm Bob Leland from Management Partners. Rick Rivera, who was instrumental in putting the model together, is going to tonight serve as my remote control and change the slides. So take it away, first slide. Management Partners represents exclusively local government clients in California and throughout the nation. We represent most of the large cities in California, but we work for a lot of small ones, too. My little niche in the organization is budget and financial planning. I've been in local government and state government finance for going on 45 years, and 37 of those years has been spent doing long-range forecasting, going back to the days when we had microcomputers and big stacks of floppy disks. The technology has improved now, but a lot of the issues are the same. So we've done a variety of projects, personally, I'm working on about my 34th, throughout the state of California and a few out of California as well. And it's proving to be very popular. There are a lot of issues that cities are facing that they have in common, and there are some unique aspects as well. The project that we have here is pretty standard in the sense that we go in and identify the factors that are driving the forecast for revenues and expenditures. Typically, we do a 20-year model. 20 years is a long time from now, and one thing I can guarantee you is that what we predict now for 20 years from now isn't going to come out, not even for 10 years or five years. There are a lot of moving parts. But the validity of a forecast is how realistic assumptions are and your ability to continually update the model and see as circumstances change, the forecast flows from there. Now, we start with baseline forecast, which means what are our available revenues and what does it cost to keep doing what we're doing now? Now, what we're doing now may be inadequate in terms of everybody's ideal for a level of service, but it's what we're committed to right now. And then what are the reasonable increases to expect in terms of everything from labor cost increases to inflation to growth in the major revenues? So that's the baseline forecast, and we show it the way it comes out before any corrective actions. Now, the reality is you can't run deficits. I mean, you can spend more than you take in in any given year, but ultimately, you can't run the general fund into a deficit. So you would be taking corrective actions, and the trend that you'll see is before taking any action. We have to know how big the problem is before we can decide how to go about solving it. The model then allows you to test various alternative outcomes, different growth rates in revenues, different growth rates in COLAs, different staffing levels, to give a sense of, there are some things that you're not paying for now that maybe ideally you should be paying for. You can factor those in and see how things turn out. The fourth category, develop budget strategies. It says optional phase two. It's optional relative to us. It won't be optional for you in terms of dealing with structural shortfall down the line. But the model gives you the ability to show what the impact of certain spending cuts or revenue increases are to help you come up with solutions for the long term. Now, our forecasting approach is that assumptions are the key. You know, the rest is just arithmetic. So the key is what are the assumptions? Because if you have different assumptions, it's a different forecast. So it's not like we're just giving you one forecast. We're giving you a tool to produce forecasts, and you get comfortable with what the assumptions are, and then that's the bogey in terms of what needs to be solved down the line. Now, and as David mentioned, you know, when you have a transparency of assumptions, people understand what's going into the model. It's a lot easier to have credibility and buy-in because, again, the arithmetic part is going to be the same no matter what. The key is those assumptions. Now, we're bringing in expert input where we have it, CalPERS, obviously, for actuary reports, Avenue Insights regarding near-term sales tax projections. Our bias is towards a realistic forecast. So we don't pull any punches, but we identify what we believe is realistic. We build it from the ground up using detailed line items. So we've got a history going back to 2004, which was prior to the Great Recession. We also build in recessions going forward as a stress test for the city's finances. A lot of forecasts don't do that. People say, well, you know, recessions are hard to forecast, who knows what it'll be. Well, the reality is if you just forecast on a linear straight line without respect to recessions, you're going to overshoot every time because the recessions pull you down, then you catch back up, but only about to where that linear line would be, and then in about seven years, you dip again. So the advantage of going back 2004 is you can see the history, you know, what happened during the dot-com bust, what happened during the Great Recession. We've taken a look at citywide trends in revenues going back to the last six recessions, back to the 1960s. So we've got a pretty good feel for how cities as a whole have fared under recessions of different magnitudes. And then we include labor cost growth. There are some people that will forecast showing no increases in labor. That's unrealistic. There is an underlying inflationary pressure. There has to be some recognition of that because the forecast builds in increases in revenues and other costs. So you want to have all parts of the model in sync. So we'll show you the impacts of that. And then there's pension. We have detailed calculations that go into the shift in benefits from the classic employees to Peppera. We build in lower discount rate over time, which is realistic. Currently, we're at a 7% discount rate, meaning CalPERS assumes that there'll be a 7% rate of return over time on investments, but most experts say over time it'll probably drop. So we have a realistic forecast. Now, something that's really important, we should probably just establish at the outset, is that there's been a large revenue gap since the Great Recession. We have looked at cities all over the state. This is just for Cloverdale, and it is the recurring general fund revenue per capita. And you can see from '04 through '07, before the recession, it was going on basically that red line as the extension of that trend. If we were having this discussion back in '05 or '06, we'd say, hey, you know, growth's been pretty good. We're kind of expecting this sort of growth into the future. And then the Great Recession comes along. So you follow the blue line, it drops, and it drops some more, and it drops some more, and then it kind of bumps along at about $600 revenue per capita, way below the pre-recession trend. And it has gradually come up, but that is a big gap. And I got to tell you, one of the larger ones, actually, that we've seen, and part of it is a reflection of the strength of the underlying economy, and part of it is the fact that other cities have gone to the voters to ask for local tax increases. And when they have, that gap begins to close, but we haven't seen anybody statewide that's closed it yet. And it's the same kind of trend, and these are adjusted per capita, so it's comparable taking a look at one city versus another. There's a large growth. I put a green line in at 3% growth, and that was if at the time of the Great Recession, instead of it being as bad as it was, if your revenues had started to grow just at 3% compounded thereafter, look at how much of a gap there still is between the pre-recession trend on the red line and where that green line is. And given that you're down at the blue, that's a significant gap. That is hard to address service needs down the line with that kind of situation. Okay, so taking a look at how revenues have grown over time, there is a vertical line which divides the chart into history and forecast, and you can see that some revenues have been a bit erratic. The other revenue category at the top, typically other revenue does go up and down. We're assuming that that calms down a little bit for the future, about generally a 2% to 3% growth rate. Property taxes, you can see the big drop from the Great Recession, gradually comes back, and then you can see the impact going forward with minor impacts from recession. Then the red line, sales and use tax, you can see it wasn't hit as hard by the Great Recession, but growth was relatively slow there. And then you can see the projected ongoing growth that Avenue Insights projects with some recessionary impacts. And then the bottom dotted line is the retirement tax transfer. Now, every forecast that we do, a city has something that's relatively unique. I mean, you're relatively unique in that you have a retirement tax, a voter-approved tax to offset pension costs. There's only about 23, I think, or 24 in the state, and you're one of them. So there's a certain amount that you can collect to pay for benefits as they existed at the time of Prop 13. There've been court cases, and we'll talk about that in a minute. There's a maximum rate you can levy. You're about 10.7 cents per $100 right now, and you've got some capacity to grow there because pension costs will be going up, and the pension costs will go up faster than your assessed value. So you are going to need a higher rate over time. And so just looking at that for a moment, what this chart shows, several moving parts. Up on the top, there's dotted red line, and that says what the rate is expressed in terms of a percent, so 10.7% now. It shows it going up to as high as 12.1, and then it kind of comes back down to pretty much the level it is now, long-term into the mid and late 30s, as pension costs finally go down because unfunded liability will be paid off significantly starting at that point. Then the rate would go lower. Now, there's an orange bar and a yellow bar in front of it. The orange bar is the gross retirement cost, and so that is the CalPERS calculation of your normal cost and unfunded accrued liability. That's the amount you have to pay them. The tax revenue, as it's currently being computed, and we've extended that into the future, that's the yellow bar. So you can see the yellow bars are a little lower than the orange, and that's because certain costs are ineligible. Now, finding out exactly what that is may require you to go to a pension actuary like John Bartel, who has done these calculations for a number of agencies around the state that have this type of tax. And it's just to do a compliance audit on the calculations relative to case law. So that's something we recommend you do. And so retirement tax, one of the special things you've got, you are lucky to have it, but even that is not going to totally solve your problem going forward. Now, in terms of personnel cost assumptions, we listed a number of the key assumptions off to the right, and we've shown here that the green portion is salary and related benefits, blue is health and insurance, and retirement is the orange. So you can see they had grown actually pretty significantly right before the Great Recession, and then in response to that, you, like every other city, has had to cut back on staff. And so costs went down for the ensuing years. It's been pretty flat. Last couple of years started to pick up. You can see fiscal year '20 right in the middle of the chart where we are now, and then you can see the growth going forward. If you've got an eagle eye, you can see that around '26, the retirement costs drop a bit because you have side funds that are paid off to CalPERS, and so that's a chunk of unfunded liability from the past. So that helps a little bit, but not too much. And then you get out to the mid to late 30s, and it drops again, and then starts dropping quite a bit after that. So the, what's going to help in the very long term is when those purse costs go down, you will have increased fiscal capacity because what you were spending on pension, that'll drop. That's a long time from now. So we've got a number of years to bridge. So in terms of the model, I mentioned that we try to be realistic. So we have a 2% wage adjustment to reflect inflation. And that is not any kind of a commentary on how your labor negotiations will go, but we're looking at the whole state. 2% is kind of a middle-of-the-road, keeping up with the Federal Reserve's goal for core inflation. So that's what we've built in. Your mileage will vary year to year depending on how negotiations go. We also, to be realistic, have a factor built in for the fact that there are merit increases for those that are eligible. Not all employees, some are at top step, but the ones that are eligible, there's an increase, 5%. And then there are also savings when you have employee turnover. You don't have a large workforce, but periodically you will have turnover, and when the more senior-level person at a higher step leaves, typically, the new person is brought in at a lower step. So at least initially, there's some savings, so we factored that in. Health increases, we've got 6% initially, ramping down to 4% over 20 years. That's pretty typical what you see from pension actuaries, health system actuaries. The pension assumes a decline in the discount rate to 6% over 20 years. That's what John Bartel, for example, would be advising as an independent actuary. If you look back, in fact, we'll show you here in a minute in terms of pension, what the implications are there. We also have a 3% vacancy rate built in. We don't typically budget for that, but there are always vacancies, so we've built in an allowance, again, to be more realistic. So on the issue of pension costs, you can see on the left, normal cost and unfunded liability as a percent of payroll. You can see the safety plan at the top and miscellaneous plan at the bottom. So miscellaneous is in the 25% of payroll range right now. Safety plan's over 50%. You can see the drop-off for miscellaneous that occurs in '23, for the safety plan in '26, when the side funds are paid off. And then they're relatively stable until they begin dropping way in the outline here. The pension costs on the right-hand side, you can see how low they were in '04. That was just coming off the period where CalPERS wasn't assessing cities much in the way of anything for pension contributions, an ill-conceived short-term policy that hurt them and us for a long time to come. You can see how it ramped up in the wake of the dot com bust, and then it was kind of flat because that was during a period after the Great Recession when positions were being cut, so there were fewer positions to be incurring pension costs. Then last year, last year completed fiscal '19 is the darker brown bar, so you can kind of see that's the status quo. And you can see there's still a pretty high hill to climb in the coming years, and that's going to be a combination of increased rates that are already being planned by CalPERS, plus the fact that we've assumed a lower discount rate. The discount rate back in the 90s was 8.75%, and CalPERS has lowered it to 7 now. So over 30 years, it's come down that much, and we're assuming that it'll go down another percent over the next 20. It seems unavoidable, given that CalPERS is trying to have less risky investments, and less risk means lower return, and that means that we've got that in our future. Okay. In terms of non-personnel costs, you can see how much they had increased right before the recession, and we see that a lot. There was more revenue. Cities were going, we've got a lot of unmet needs, let's address them. Then the Great Recession comes along, and boom, big drop from over $5 million down to about $1.25 million. And that's beginning to creep back up, and again, you see the adopted budget, fiscal year '20, you're in the middle. We're assuming a 3% inflator ongoing debt service, we're assuming stays at the current level, and then a 2% growth in transfers out. So that's what we're looking at in terms of O and M. And actually, you can see that it'll be about '20, '23, '24, '25, we'll just be getting back up to the level that you were actually at all the way back in 2007. So we kind of bring it all together here. This is sort of where the rubber hits the road. So what does the structural shortfall look like, and what does it do to reserves? So on the left, on top, you just have a green line for revenue and a red line for expense. You can see the gap that's created, but you can see it better on the bottom, which is the annual change in terms of surplus or shortfall. And you can see it's been up and down in the past, depending on the economy. We're seeing going forward, starting at about $250,000 last year to getting closer to $500,000 a year and then continuing. There are little ripples in there, and when it goes down the furthest, that's a recession. So we've got a recession, we're assuming, in 2021, then seven years later in '28, then seven years later in '35. And every recession has a shortfall that we're assuming exists for 18 months, and then over the next three years, a recovery, and then that kind of a little sine wave in the revenues. And so that ripple effect has the ever-increasing shortfall. So it doesn't really get better, except on the backside of a recession where you've got some stronger recovery. So what that means in terms of reserves, and this is just for the unassigned balance, you can see the yellow band is ideally where you'd like to be. There's a 25% goal, ideally where you'd be. The lower end of that is 10%. So I figure in the yellow area, since we're already taking into account recessions, that's probably where you'd like to be. But you can see that over the next couple of years, it just continues to drop. By fiscal '22, you would have an outright deficit in the general fund, and that's what you can't have. And so you're going to have to be in a position in fiscal '20, which is the year we just started. During this year is the time that you've got to do the planning so that whatever expenditure cuts or revenue increases you've planned for, and if voter approval is required, it receives that, can take effect in fiscal '21. Because if you wait much longer, then you're going to have problems. And so your timeline is such that you've really got to take action in the next year. Now, this, as you will recall, has a 2% cost of living for employees. The next slide, which we ran, just says, well, suppose there were no COLAs at all. Let's say that we did just say there would be no increases. Now, that's not a sustainable long-term strategy, but let's just say we did it. Well, there's still a shortfall in the near term. It does get better in the long term, but there's about a 13-year gap between '22 and '34 that has to be bridged because that period of negative can't exist. And so that is going to require revenue increases or expenditure reductions. They're not, you know, with a relatively small staff and limited ability to raise revenues, there are not a lot of choices there, but we're going to take a look at a few. Now, before we do that, I'll just say, I'll be the first to say, there are various outcomes that can change the forecast. These are pretty straightforward. In any given year, you may find that you had more employee vacancies. Statewide, that is what's happening. There are agencies with anywhere from 7%, 8%, up to 10%, 12%, 15% vacancy rates right now. Some of that is a strategy to keep positions vacant, to just have more flexibility going into the next recession. And some of it is just they can't keep up, and there've been a lot of baby boomers turning over. So that is the prime suspect for a forecast that improves is that vacancies will be higher. There could be stronger revenue growth, sure. There could be delayed or weaker recessions. CalPERS may surprise us and get better investment returns. Or you could completely change the game by getting a local tax increase. Obviously, that will change. However, there are also some items that can definitely worsen the forecast. Pension losses or a discount rate cut could occur greater than what we've planned in the forecast. Revenue growth can be weaker. Any given year, COLA could be higher than the 2%. You could have staffing increases. There was some discussion about that for the current budget, but decision on that was put off for now. And then there can be extreme events. We've had examples right in the neighborhood here of extreme events that cities have had to deal with that significantly increase their costs. Next. So I just wanted to end taking a look at three revenue options. The first is local sales and use tax. We've listed here the agencies in Sonoma County with local transaction and use taxes, as they're called, and you can see the cities and the rates. Santa Rosa actually has 3/4 cents, so they have actually a total of .75. State law limits a local measure to 1% with a combined limit of 2%. So you kind of have to look over your shoulder at what the county and perhaps the school district and a transit authority, you know, is doing relative to the 2% limit. You don't currently have a local TUT. It does require a majority vote if you go with a special tax. The next general elections are the primary in March and November of 2020. So laying groundwork with the community takes some time, and if you're going to go this route, you've got to start soon. Just as a consideration, on the November 2018 ballot, there were 58 sales tax measures in the state, and 52 of them passed, including all four that were in Orange County. So the world is really changing in terms of cities' abilities to get votes on this. So 90% of those tax measures passed. We're needing in the neighborhood a $600,000 a year, and a 0.5% sales tax almost gets you there. 1% would be double that, to 1.1 million. So clearly, your best revenue producer is the sales tax. And if you look at the League of Cities and Mike Coleman's website, where he lists all of the outcomes of elections going back 20 years or so, it's clear that the sales tax has had the best luck of any revenue measure. Now, there's the utility user tax. You have one now, relatively low level, 3%. The statewide average is about 5.2%. That can be imposed on a variety of services. Yours is pretty typical, gas, electric, phone, cable, or video. So that's set to expire in 2022. We're currently assuming it's ongoing, and the best election for that will be in 2020. So all of a sudden, oops, now we're talking about two different measures in the same year, which is not ideal. But you don't want to lose the $460,000 or so that you've already got, and so that's going to take some strategizing. The two out of the three utility tax measures on the November 18 ballot passed, that's 67%. Not a big sample size, but typically, when you go back to past years, the utility users' tax hasn't had quite the success rate that the sales tax has had. If you went to 6%, that would raise about $460,000, be double what you've got now. The last one's transient occupancy tax. And for that to work, you really need to have a lot of hotels, and you don't have a lot of hotels here, so it's not a big revenue producer. Each additional 1% above your current rate only generates about $23,000. So it doesn't get you a lot of mileage. There's some political capital expended in getting anything on the ballot, and it's kind of tough to expend it for something that doesn't generate a lot of money, even if most people in town would feel like, well, I'm not going to pay that, so I vote for it. Problem is, it just doesn't generate a lot of revenue. So in closing, our major takeaways are that, you know, the financial condition should be a significant concern, and it already is because you went through the process to bring us on board and kind of give an outside second opinion. And so you've got to start on that, but it is a concern. And these trends aren't going to continue without significant either expenditure cuts or revenue increases. You may have to look to cost reductions as a priority simply because it takes longer to bring a new revenue online. And of course, if you don't get the voter approval, then the cavalry is not coming there in terms of revenue increase. A compliance audit, you know, that's just something else you should take a look at on this unique aspect of your fiscal system, the pension tax. You're going to have, any increases in the tax revenue will be subject to a general election vote. The good news is 2020 is what everybody's looking at for big turnout. So that's the year to have something on the ballot. It's too bad there's an issue with the utility tax at the same time as you've got the potential need for a sales tax, but that is the item number one that you need to talk through. And then again, just a reminder that over the next nine months or so, you really need to come up with solutions, both on the revenue and expenditure side, so that can be implemented when you get going at the beginning of fiscal year '21, because that's really your last year before you conceivably go negative in '22. So I wish I had a rosier outlook to give you, but our best gift to you is our honesty and how we see it. And so that's the situation that you're confronting. You've been able, because of the pension tax, to put off somewhat what other cities had to confront years ago in terms of trying to get extra tax rates, but you're kind of at that point now yourself. So at this point, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to respond to any questions that you've got.
All right. I'll start at my left. Any immediate questions before I open it up to public comment?
Immediate, it didn't get any easier to read the fourth time through.
Right. Okay. Questions for? Go ahead.
Well, thank you for that gloomy report. This is actually the second time I got to sit through.
Yeah, it is.
Mayor Bagby and myself got to enjoy it at the Finance Police Subcommittee meeting. Just a couple of things, and this one is, first one is with David. David, I know a few years ago, we had a study done, and I'm not sure if it was by John Bartel or not, but I know I keep asking Susie, and whenever the ad valorem tax subject comes up, I always ask, are we maximizing that to the best of our ability? And I think the discussion has to be had. Is it time to bring somebody in to look at it?
I will point to the consent agenda item tonight where council supported, you know, keeping the rate where it is currently at 10.7%. I do think that is, you know, the maximum rate that we can charge based on, you know, today's numbers to recover the costs that were allowed to, you know, under the voter-approved Obviously, it's a process we look at every year, and as Mr. Leland suggested, you know, we should engage a firm like Bartel to do that compliance audit, just to make sure that we are consistent with current case law.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about are we charging enough. I'm talking about are the items that we're charging, are we missing any of those? Have they slipped through the cracks when that ad valorem was first passed? And then secondly, you had mentioned we're limited to the percentage of tax initiatives that we could have on the ballot. But on the user utility, if we just went in to remove the sunset, no percentage increase, that would not count, or would that?
Well, actually, there's no limit on how many items you go to the ballot with at one time. One city put three tax measures on the same ballot. Unfortunately, all three lost, and ever since then, there's been the sense that you've got to be careful putting too much on people's plates at one time. The limit on the sales tax, there's a certain amount, basically, it's 1% rate that you can have, as long as that doesn't exceed 2% overlapping. So you take a look at everything else going on in Sonoma County, overlapping your tax code areas, so that limitation applies. But you could put four or five measures on at one time. It just wouldn't be advisable to do that.
And then lastly, on page 20, that, those numbers, it's a silly question, but they pertain to Cloverdale, correct?
Which slide number?
It's the fourth summary, slide number 20.
Point 116 in your packet.
Yeah, this one here? Yeah. For those of you that wanted more numbers, this is the summary, just total revenues, expense. It's got the balance, starting from your last audited financials, and then you can see in the yellow highlights where the problems start developing in the future, yeah.
So basically, what you're saying to us is July, we're going to wind up with a $500,000 deficit here within a year or so, $443,000.
Yeah.
And that's just based on what we've got today?
No, when they did this. Sorry, I totally spoke out, but when they did this.
Well, what I'm referring to was there's no COLA increase in that.
No, this is, this has, this version here has the 2%.
Oh, okay.
This is a life as usual?
Yes, yes. That is a baseline, yeah, a life as usual, noting, of course, that you might be in negotiations every single year on issues of cost of living, and it is a meet-and-confer process. However, because it represents long-term inflation, we have that built in because it's reasonable to expect there to be increases. So that part is built in. So that part is built in. Any increases beyond that level, or staffing increases, would add to the shortfall.
And it goes on the assumption that the user utility tax is in perpetuity, right?
It does, it does.
Thank you.
Margaret, did you have any questions?
Well, I had a conversation with our financial manager, and it doesn't look good. And also with Kevin.
Well, any questions for Bob right now, and then I'm going to open it up to the public so they can ask questions. All right. Well, with that, yeah, and then I'll bring it back to the council for, I don't know what we're going to deliberate about, I mean, where to have the wake, but I could invite the public to come and ask any questions or make any comments at this time. Don't go too far, Mr. Leland. Would anyone like to come forward and ask any questions? All right. Well, then I'm going to, Rick, did you have anything you wanted to, since you developed this, did you have anything to add? You need to go to the microphone, so.
Mayor, if I can ask Rick to come to the microphone and maybe just provide a brief overview of the model that you're working on, that, I mean, you've provided the staff, but, you know, what we might be able to do with that model going forward.
Great. Thank you, David. So one of the things that I do want to point out is that the model that we've developed is one that we are giving to you so that you can use in future years to plan and to run scenarios and to kind of think through your different revenue and expenditure ideas. And in fact, I am planning on delivering a fully-featured, about 35-page manual for navigating the model, as well as updating it for future years, including how you would update the budget data that we currently have for when you receive your '18, '19 audited actuels, as well as any changes to personnel or personnel allocations you may have. Features that we've included are, as Bob mentioned, making changes to COLA, making changes to your tax rates, including what years those are effective. We have also included features where you can add new revenue streams or new expenses that we haven't thought of, that are more flexible, things like adding a cannabis tax, or things like taking out new debt. Those are all areas within the model that you can adjust. Other things that you can do is change COLAs by individual bargaining group. So it's really fairly full-featured, and the documentation that we're putting together will walk you through all of that, how you make those changes, and how you can read that model.
Thank you, Rick. And I appreciate Rick sharing that, because that's one of the work products that Management Partners is providing to the city, is this tool that we can use going forward to help forecast and look at different scenarios. So we could look at a scenario where we may want to look at more aggressive revenue growth and see what that impact looks like, or likewise, you know, what the impact of, you know, increased expenditure. So that, it's dynamic, and we can also model those different potential revenue sources so that, you know, we can continue to use this tool as an information mechanism to help inform the council about their future budgetary decisions.
And I do want to point out, all of the graphs and charts that we had in this presentation exist as live graphs within the model. So as you make changes, the graphs that you have seen here would change to reflect those changes and make it relatively easy to follow. Thank you.
So council, the direction that staff's recommending council take is really just to receive the presentation tonight. There's no formal action or vote required. Of course, this is an opportunity to have a conversation about, you know, some of the takeaways, and if there's any direction that you might think that you might want staff to engage, you know, to address some of the issues that were presented in this forecast. You can obviously do that now, or, you know, later on in the agenda, you have the ability to request staff bring forward, you know, future agenda items. For example, during the budget process, we did identify the need to consider hiring a firm to assist us with potential polling around a local tax measure. That's something that, you know, we tried to anticipate that the council may want to do. Obviously, it's something that we'd want to, you know, start as soon as possible so that it could start informing the council on what are some of the potential outcomes of ballot measures. We do have also funds included in the budget to retain Management Partners to help us with some of those strategic initiatives. They obviously have quite a bit of expertise in-house that they can bring to assist us. And I've, you know, I've always appreciated the expertise that they have in our conference calls. So those are things that if you see merit in it, we can bring back, that would kind of, again, the outcome of this is that first start in developing a sound fiscal strategy was to really be, to inform the council where we stand today. And, you know, it's kind of a call to action as to what are the steps we want to take going forward.
So in line with what you were saying, you know, and hearing that the graphs are living when the product is delivered, that's fantastic. Thank you. Where my head's going is putting in some of the projected revenue from the potential annexations that are happening on the south end of town, the projects that'll be the result. And where I'm going with that is, is if we were to plug some of that stuff into the model, as soon as it's delivered, of course, not trying to rush you, that might help us prioritize really where we want to see the effort put into those projects, how we want to commit staff's priorities for the coming years. I think that tool needs to be like top middle shelf, like easy to find, something that we just keep going back to, because I think as our goal-planning sessions evolve over the coming years, this might actually help us change its format a little bit to prioritize a little bit more informed. And so I see a killer use coming from that. And what are our options for approaching your firm over expanding its capabilities should we see a need?
I told you not to go far.
We are always updating our models, and if you get to a point where you sort of want to go to a version 2.0, we can talk about what kind of a contract would be needed for that, and be much smaller than putting the initial one together.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have anything?
Me, no. This was obviously coming, and the recession that's headed for us is going to make it all the worse. It's obvious.
Yes, who would be manipulating this tool? Would that be you, as we retain you, or would it be our financial manager?
Well, our model's become the property of the city. And so typically, somebody in the finance department or the city manager's office would drive it. If there's, we've got an owner's manual. If there are questions, of course, we can respond to that. If it gets into a major effort restructuring it, then we can talk about, you know, some extra hours to do that. But it's designed to be yours, it's not proprietary. And so, I mean, it is a little bit of a spreadsheet on steroids, but it is not anything that someone who's not familiar with Excel, you know, could handle.
And so we could enter numbers, delete numbers?
Sure.
And look at?
And it's designed to be updated, as Rick said. It's not, you know, the, a lot of budgets or other documents, you know, become doorstops, you know, after a while. They're not living documents. So the idea of having a model like this, that you can update as frequently as monthly, as you close out each month of the year and you get new data, you could put it in. And it is designed to be living. And I, as I say, the numbers always change, you know? Don't lock into these, because as you update it and as new assumptions change, things will be modified. But that's what you want. You want to be able to show what the world looks like in the future if you make these changes, whether it's adding staff, or changing COLAs, annexing territory, you know? If there are major businesses that come into town, which is different than the normal background noise of growth, that is going to be factored in.
Growth of, or perhaps? Not so much growth. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as far as I'm concerned, I agree with Councilmember Turner. You know, we have some projects coming in on the south, I guess on the southwest side of town. We also have the, hopefully, resort coming in on the southeast side, but, you know, I've been singing that song for 15 years now. I think the more immediate thing that we have to do, and possibly at the 926 Finance Police Subcommittee meeting, is we can start talking about a ballot initiative. We're almost out of 20, I mean, almost out of 2019. 2020 will be here before we know it. So I'd like to, I guess, move forward, and the Finance Subcommittee bring back a couple ideas for the council to chew on, and let's see if we can get some ballot initiatives passed this year.
Worth a shot. If I may?
Certainly.
The product has not yet been delivered. Without putting you too much on the spot, do you anticipate we'll have a tool to work with by the meeting you had spoken about, or do you not really find it needed just for that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Actually, I'll just echo that a bit. I was going to recommend that we look, probably create a standing item on Finance Police Administration Subcommittee to look at all aspects of increasing our revenue, and also immediately to look on the ballot initiative, which, as we know, it's going to be particularly challenging. We have several ballot initiatives that are going to be on the county, that the county is putting forward, or our transit authority, or SMART, or you name it, and it's going to be a very crowded field. So we're going to need to be very strategic about that. So I don't know how we can get away with not considering something. In addition to that, I'm going to ask that we put on the agenda, looking at, I like, actually, I want to say, I do, I really appreciate the suggestion of Councilmember Turner, is to look at a more nuanced approach to some of the projects that we engage in, and just, we can't, you know, we're government, we can't just look at what's going to bring in the most money. We have to look at, you know, safety and demand, and, you know, who's coming to dance. But we should have some kind of a rating system, or some kind of feel for how we prioritize those moving into the budget decisions for next year. In addition to that, what I'm going to ask that we agendize on the Subcommittee meeting is looking at all areas where we can increase our income, things like addressing blight in the downtown, things like possibly looking at tools like conservatorship, or other tools where we can start actually getting tax revenue out of these blighted, empty properties that have been dragging us down for years. Because, quite honestly, we've been paying the price for a long time now. Like, as you said earlier, the rubber's really hitting the road. We can't afford to be letting go of the potential property tax, potential income for the community, because it's just not sustainable. So I'd like to add that as an item. Anybody else? Do you have something else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and David. I would like to see, perhaps, in that standing item, perhaps a process or a plan to inform our constituents of the importance of possible future tax in the ballot, so that they're not hit with an increase in, for example, the sales tax or any other kind of tax.
They're going to get that if we go forward. They're going to, we reached out to you quite a bit.
Because, you know, not everybody reads the paper, not everybody is on social media, and not everybody watches the council meetings.
I don't understand that, and it gets the best show in town. But you have a good point. I know, you have a point, okay? Although there will be considerable outreach in the process of developing the ballot measure, as well as when we're putting it out on the ballot, there'll be considerable outreach, so. Right, anything else regarding this item?
Thank you. It can't always be good news.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry it wasn't better.
You know what, Mr. Leland, it's better to know than not to know.
Well, that's my theory.
And this is the tools to really probably change our behavior, change our priorities, and make sure we don't end up in bankruptcy like the other cities that were on your list that you clearly helped. I know Stockton and Vallejo, I'm sure, have benefited greatly from those wise council, and we do really appreciate it. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Just a quick note, Mayor. We understand the direction of council, and we'll definitely be agendizing discussion about a ballot initiative and revenue options on the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee. I think we also need to look at the current sales tax measures that are out there, and the 2% kind of, I think, statutory cap, and how we might, how we fit into that. Because, you know, I just was kind of noting here, we've got a, you know, a sales tax measure for SMART, a sales tax measure for transportation, one for the library.
That's enough doom and gloom for one day, David, thank you.
You know, open space, and then parks, all of which are, provide revenue for very important things that we value in our community. But as you can see, Cloverdale is one of the few cities that doesn't have a, you know, an extra, like, district tax. And so, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, recognize that it could come at an additional cost to our residents, but it also might mean vital services that are community demands and desires from their city. So it's truly a balancing act.
I think that's what needs to be the standing topic on the Finance Subcommittee. Do you agree? Do you have adequate direction? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob and Rick.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thanks for coming up. Well, on that sunny note, we are going to move over to our next item, which is number item 13, Professional Services Agreement with GHD Engineering to Develop an Infrastructure Assessment and Plan for South Cloverdale, which will hopefully bring needed income. Who would like to take this?
Mayor, council, I'll take it. Kevin Thompson, Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director. Again, this item is a professional services agreement with GHD for the infrastructure assessment plan. Joyce Chung is here tonight, and I've asked her to come up after I give a little bit of a background to kind of talk about the plan itself. As you've seen over the last year or so, there's a lot of growth pressure happening in the south area of Cloverdale that's currently not in the city, but in our sphere of influence, we've had the co-op, the Native American Tribe who's looking to do a subdivision, the Baumgartner Ranch, the school, there's a lot of development pressure down there. And as we've gone through the process of reviewing that, we've kind of really understood now that we don't really know how to condition these projects, we don't know exactly what is needed to serve the projects in terms of infrastructure, water, wastewater, wastewater, storm drain, dry utilities, and the like. So this proposal tonight from GHD is really our first step in getting to what we want to call an assessment district, where, again, the first step will be, we need to understand what we need to put down there to help serve what the future land uses will be. And then beyond that, where, as step two, will be setting up a financial model where we're going to have the, you know, a way to put this infrastructure in and to assess the properties that develop in the area for not only the installation of the infrastructure, but also the long-term maintenance of the infrastructure. In your current budget for the, for the current budget right now, we did allocate $250,000 for this study. I'm happy to report it came in a little less than that, at $197,000. Our recommendation tonight is that you adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with GHD Engineering to prepare the infrastructure assessment plan. And with that, I'd like to ask Joyce to come down, if you wouldn't mind, and just give us a little overview of the plan itself.
Thank you, Kevin, and good evening, everyone. I'm Joyce Chung with GHD, and I'm the proposed project manager for this infrastructure assessment and plan for South Cloverdale. And GHD is a multidisciplinary engineering consulting firm, and we have a local office in Santa Rosa. We are also a global company, which means that we have a lot of resources and talent to tap into, to help finish projects on time and on budget. For this project, we do have a team put together from For this project, we do have a team put together from the Santa Rosa office, focused on the transportation side of things, Emeryville, where I am working out of, and we will have our hydraulic modular for the water and storm drainage systems, out of the Emeryville office. And we also have Casey, which she sits in the Irvine office, and she will be leading the water assessment. And as Kevin had mentioned, it is our understanding that the city is interested to better understand what our needs, infrastructure needs for South Cloverdale. There are recent and future developments planned for this area, and knowing what the infrastructure in terms of water systems, wastewater, sanitary sewer line work, stormwater drainage systems, and roadways would help facilitate that development in the future. And what we've done is that we've broken our scope of work into six different tasks. The first one being the land use confirmation, that will tell us what is the projected population that you're envisioning for this area, and that will also serve as the basis for a lot of our assessments in the future, like water flow, or water demands and sewer flows in that area. The tasks two, three, and four would be the water system analysis, the wastewater system analysis, and the stormwater drainage analysis. And what we'll do is, we'll have hydraulic modelers assess what the existing infrastructure, where they end, and how we would extend that into South Cloverdale. And we will select a system that probably the engineering department is familiar with, or a program that would help, that would be compatible with your existing programs and software that you currently use, so that it's the transition or the incorporation of these models into your system would be as seamless as possible. And what these hydraulic models would do is that, oh, provide a preliminary sketch of how the utilities would be laid out, and also the diameters, the pipe diameters, which would indicate what the associated costs are for the improvements. We'll also, under task five, is to develop the traffic impact study, where we'll look into the level of service for the existing roadways, and see what modifications are needed for future, future development, and how that will be integrated into the South Cloverdale area. And last but not least, is the dry utilities coordination, where we'll reach out to service providers like PG&E, or telecommunications companies, to see where their existing networks are, how to extend them into the service area, if they're not already located there, and what is the process to extend it if they aren't there already. If they are there already, then it can also help us align the stormwater sewer main parallel, or in the roadways that these utilities are already in. So all of these tasks, we're going to coordinate closely with the city to make sure that we incorporate what the city envisions as the needs and the goals for the development here, so that we can have the right inputs for the models. And we'll summarize all the findings and recommendations in a report. You'll have a draft version for preliminary review, and then we'll work with you to incorporate any changes that you think are necessary. And with the report, we'll also include, like, a conceptual estimate for all of these infrastructure improvements. And as Kevin had mentioned before, the financial options and funding sources won't be part of this project, but it will give you at least a budgetary amount to help facilitate discussions in the future. So are there any questions related with the proposal or scope of work?
You want to start? Go ahead.
Sure. It's a little bit hard for me to see on the maps, but I just want to make sure that if we're paying for this study, that we're going past our sphere of influence on the south side, all the way down, all the way to Rain's Creek Water and Teresa Drive. See, I saw that. But for the full project, for the water, sewer, all of it, I'm, I just want to make sure that every single item is going all the way down to at least Teresa Drive, or to the industrially zoned parcels down there that have been waiting desperately for us to allow them to annex for years and years and years, and are screaming that they want to expand their manufacturing businesses, and cannot, because they're in this bubble between county and city, and neither one of us, us or the county, will actually deal with them. So I just want it to be on record that we are going all the way down to at least Teresa Drive, because I want to push to increase our sphere of influence down there.
Do you want to address that, City Manager?
Mayor, Councilmembers, if I can, I think the limit of the study is the sphere of influence.
And that's not good enough for me. If we're going to spend this kind of money, then I want this to go a little bit further, because we have industrial land down there that is in limbo, and the maps show that it's included, all the way down to Teresa Drive on a couple of the maps, but it's really unclear in reading the verbiage for me. And I think we would be really, really doing a disservice to our community that has been sitting and waiting for so long not to go that extra small distance past our sphere of influence to industrial zoning down there, because these people have been waiting literally for a generation. And I just would really like to put that in there. I mean, we're paying almost $200,000 for a study, that if those people want to get involved at all, they're going to have to repeat that study over again. And it seems like, well, we have this opportunity, then let's think of our whole community, not just that. And I would like to say that until that's done, I cannot approve this.
So my kingdom for a zoning map, just a question on page 125 of the packet, page six of the presentation, that bottom street?
125.
Yeah, page 125 of the packet, that map, what street is that, that is the southern border of the study area? Do we, is that Teresa? So it's going, that is Teresa?
That's Teresa, but yet, in reading some of the verbiage and stuff, it does not go to Teresa, it just goes to our sphere of influence. And our sphere of influence is not Teresa Drive. Our sphere of influence is up two parcels, two, one, two, maybe three parcels north, south, no, north of, you've got New World out there, you've got Cooks, Industrial Center, and there is your sphere of influence. And just those two big parcels are sitting out there, maybe three or four, actually, because if you consider the ones in the back, they're our best bet for manufacturing or anything. They cannot expand, they would dearly love to. So why, why spend this kind of money if indeed it's not going to be in this study?
If I, if I may, council, there are various land use designations, or land use boundaries that are, exist within that southwest planning area. We have a, our sphere of influence, which is identified-
I'm aware.
-is our ultimate growth boundary in our general plan.
I know.
And then there's different boundary for our urban services area, as well as our urban growth boundary, and then sphere of influence. So all those have different boundaries, unfortunately, they're not all co-terminous.
I'm aware, but where is this study going down to? I just want a bottom line on where water and sewer, you've got Rain's Creek Water District down there in that south end. On one map, it looks like it's in, and on another map, it isn't. So is it in or isn't it? That's all I want to know, because I've got people that are counting on me to bring this up, that are very interested in raising some of the money that we need to survive, and can't expand and can't do this. And all we have to do is just say, who cares if it's in our sphere of influence or not? It's two more parcels down. I just, we may, I may be making a mistake. Maybe it is in there, and I'm just not aware.
If I may? I'm looking at the general plan, I'm looking at the January 2015 map of the general plan, land use map, and the dashed line, which is a sphere of influence, includes Rain's Creek and that whole southern area, so similar to figure one on the consultant's map. There's no variation there.
There, so you are guaranteeing to me-
I am guaranteeing, yes.
-that that will be in there?
It is in there.
It is in there?
Yes.
For sure.
Figure one and the general map match up.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and there was some ambiguity on our end, too, so apologize for that. We did note that there might be different variations of the map. We provided two in here, and sorry for the confusion, but we will work with you to make sure that we have, we understand the most recent general plan map that you are referencing.
I would be thrilled to work with you on this project. I've been waiting for this for years and years and years, so it's about time we did it. Thank you.
We're excited to work on it.
Anyone else from this slide? Questions?
Both of my questions revolve around time, timing. If the contract is executed within the next couple of days, when will we have the report back? That's number one. Number two, how long is the report good for? Or is there no expiration on it? And what I'm referring to is similar to what Councilmember Brigham said. Right now, somebody may not want our services, but five years from now, New World Manufacturing may want them. Can we rely on this report?
So to answer your first question about the timeline for this report, we're anticipating around approximately four months from the notice to proceed, and we can also always tighten that timeline up, or have in additional milestones. We don't have a concrete schedule set up yet, and we will develop one that can meet any milestones that the city is trying to push towards. As I mentioned before, we have the staff and the members of this team, who are selected based on their availability and their talent, and if there's a tighter timeline that you are looking to see, we can try to find some more resources on our end to make sure that we accommodate your schedule. But on the back of a, a rough estimate, I would say around four months for the report.
That's not bad.
And how long is the report good for? Do we even need it, or we just, is it at our discretion when we want it updated?
Yeah, so we, during the land use confirmation task, we're going to look at the general plan, see what those land use categories were established for, like duration, was it 20-year duration, was it change? And the population projections would be based on that. So if we include the manufacturing facilities that you're referencing into the study, then the systems will be sized to accommodate them, and I think the report would be valid for the, as the duration that the land uses, or for this area is set for.
Thank you.
Well, I, so I assume that that question is answered then in the summary, where it states that you're going to be able to build out flow scenarios in different times and different situations, pretty much like we were seeing in our budget presentation earlier. So you have that kind of programming?
Yeah.
That can be foreseen what could happen within so many years and so on.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll use the data and the specific scenarios that you want us to model, and we'll have those documented in the report, as well as the model itself that we'll transfer over to you for ownership, if you want to play around with it and tweak some things in the future, if you need to.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I just have a question, and it might be more for our city engineer. On page 135 of the packet, 16 of the presentation, under number five, the traffic impact study, how will this integrate with the project at South Cloverdale Boulevard and the overpass there? The current, the current legalization project?
Right, I think we would try to capture what our goals are for the south end of town in this master plan that's being developed, so.
Okay.
They're not directly related, but they're neighbors, I say.
Right, but they're going to, they're going to play, work and play well with other, with each other in the plan.
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure.
So this is information that I would be providing to GHD in terms of what is our vision for this southern cross?
Okay, great.
Southern crossing, excuse me.
The southern crossing, there we go, thank you. Well, at this time, don't, don't go too far, Joyce, and you worked on the Six Acres project, right?
I did.
So that's why I had seen you before, and then I noticed it in your bio, I was like, oh, that's why she's so familiar, so, yeah, you're really good, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Would anyone from the public, or like, any applicants who are in the audience, like to come forward and comment on the project?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Oh, can you please?
My name is Phil Wright.
You're right on it, thank you very much, Phil.
And I am a real estate consultant. I'm here tonight representing the Dry Creek Rancheria and the Sonoma Vintners Co-op. And as you know, you went through the process with Sonoma Vintners Co-op, they, they are fully on board to support this resolution, and participate as much as they can in making this happen for the south end. And Dry Creek Rancheria is no longer in contract on the south end, two properties that they were in escrow on, they've closed escrow, so they now own the properties, and they're in, in the process of submitting their tentative map for their senior citizen housing next week. And so our biggest question was timing, and four months is certainly a good number. We were, you never know with studies, how long they take. But the larger the area, I think, certainly makes good sense to us. The front piece, after watching your budget situation, it seems like you could deal with some retail tax down in that area, and we're certainly looking to give you that. And they're interested in moving as quickly as the city can, can move to generate all the infrastructure down there. And the tribe has indicated that they will front some improvements, maybe ahead of the assessment district. Generally, the way it's worked in Healsburg and Windsor, excuse me, which I've been involved in, is developers can go in and front the improvements, it's actually less money in the long run for the city, and, and they get a credit back, you know, towards the assessments. And so the tribe is certainly willing to do that. Sonoma Vintners Co-op have already indicated that they would do that for partial improvements. And so I'm just here to let you know that they're in fully support of the resolution.
Great.
Any questions, if you happen to answer them?
Thanks. Did you have a question for Phil?
Yeah, Phil, I do have a question.
Yeah.
You said that you were getting ready to submit your tentative map.
Correct.
Who are you going to submit it to, the county or the city?
To the city.
Okay, even though you're not annexed in yet?
Yeah, as part of the pre-annexation application.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we're going to, the annexation application is going to go in concurrent, just as fast as we can, you know, move the ball forward.
Great, thank you. Margaret, did you have anything for Phil? Did you have any questions? Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Would anyone else from the public like to come forward and comment on this item? All right, well, with that, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any further deliberation or questions?
I just have one last comment for the city engineers, more of a question. Sounds like you've reviewed this in its entirety, you noticed any gaps in the scope of work? Anything that you kind of wished was in there that isn't? Anything that you can share before we move forward?
There's no gaps. I've been over this with a fine-tooth comb, and this is necessary, just to establish the infrastructure that's needed to the south end of town. The next step will be the financial plan, how do we get it built? So that's, that's yet to come.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does she have anything else? I'll say, Margaret.
No.
Anything else, or any, anything else from the council members? Okay, well, then, our city attorney can.
Just, just, nothing, nothing.
You're not, you're not going to put a damper on this, are you?
No, no, not at all, not at all. I was just going to make two minor amendments to the, to the resolution.
Okay.
And really, it's towards the end of the title, it should read, "And authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement in a form approved by the city attorney," and then, "Now therefore be it resolved at the end," again, "and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in a form approved by the city attorney."
Right. Sorry, what page is the, does the resolution start on?
119.
Packet 119.
119, thank you. Would anyone like to move the item as amended?
I move.
And is there-
And have to read the revision.
You can, if you've got these notes. By title only.
Yeah. The title is quite normal. Resolution- The title is quite long. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, approving a professional services agreement with GHD Engineering to develop an infrastructure assessment and plan for the unincorporated South Cloverdale area in an amount not to exceed $194,702, plus a 10% contingency for unforeseen cost of runs, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. As amended.
Do we need to read the rest?
Execute an agreement in a form approved by the city attorney.
Yeah, to execute and approve.
An agreement in a form approved by the city attorney.
By the city attorney.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Sue, are you still with us?
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Excuse me, Brigham.
Aye.
And Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Councilmember Crouch?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Joyce. We look forward to your work product. All right. So moving on to subcommittee reports, the next airport meeting is October 1st, and the next finance administration and police meeting is September 26th.
All right, the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee met last week, went real well. Next meeting will be October 15th, 2019, City Hall, 4:00 p.m. The Public Works Subcommittee will meet this month, September 24th, 2019, 4:00 p.m. City Hall.
As city and school board will meet September 16th.
What about Fire District?
Pending.
Or pending, okay.
To be determined.
Okay, great. Council reports, including, well, we haven't had our student liaison yet. I guess we have that to, to look forward to. Any-
Madam Mayor, I'm meeting with the student liaisons this weekend.
Oh, great.
Before they come to our meetings.
Oh, you're going to, you're going to warn them and queue them up? Okay, great. Any other council reports? I saw yours written, was submitted in writing.
Just one verbal, Madam Mayor. City Manager David Kelly and I met with Elsa, a community member regarding potential locations for dog parks.
Did he just steal your thunder?
Well, no.
Okay.
I met with her a few times, and I guess the answers I gave her, she wasn't satisfied with. The locations that she wanted, one was at City Park, and I just couldn't see that working.
We, we had a discussion that did not surround City Park entirely. We identified a couple of different plots that were, what was that really clever word you used? Opportunistic sites, I think you said, Mr. Kelly? And there's still considerable hurdles. They're privately owned. They will, you know, the owners of these properties will need to be approached. But she did have the opportunity to look at a map where it zoned out the different areas of Cloverdale. And David had a really clever application on his iPad that brought up details of the different plots, and so we were able to get some details going. Yeah.
So is there, there was nothing that staff could find on the extensive search that was done just a couple of years ago around dog parks? You guys couldn't dig up anything? Because this was looked into very extensively during, I mean, when Mike McGuire was still the supervisor, and we went all over town looking at areas, and it was, the search was pretty exhaustive, and we, we came up empty, and we're, you know, obviously, you know, waiting for a new development, or a new development to come along where we could require a dog park. So I just was wondering, you weren't able to find any of those records for her?
That was also part of our dialogue. We put Elsa, we gave her some contact information for individuals that will be proposing developments in Cloverdale, and she will be announcing to them, the people who are supporting her and the dog park she wants to see going there.
Well, and I'm just wondering, you know, and since there is a whole group who were very active on this, I mean, just a few short years ago, that had raised money to, for a dog park and worked with staff extensively, I just was wondering if we'd ever put them in touch with-
Actually, more than once.
Well, okay, you put them in touch, okay. Well, we tried. All right, sure.
Yes, when Council, Mary Ann and I met with the bone gardener group afterwards, I also discussed the possibility of dog park with them. So this is something that it's, it's been-
Absolutely.
In dialogues.
And Elsa is just a member of the community who has found a supportive following, and she is just kind of taking lead on this, even if it is viewed as repetitious. She has taken the torch, and she's running with it, so.
We're being patient and waiting. I really want a dog park myself. You know, I have my gift.
Well, one of the sites we also looked at was the Vintage Meadows, and for some reason, I thought that would be a good site, but she didn't like it, so anyhow.
Well, there you go. You tried.
I tried.
Yeah. And I, and I, and I think that was, that was looked at extensively, too, and it was found unsuitable, as well as the areas down at the River Park. So unfortunately, we're repeating history, but that's okay. We have some good potentials on the horizon. So on, just on council reports, I just had one addendum. I submitted mine in writing, and I forgot to include that yesterday, yesterday morning, I sort of attended a National League of Cities webinar on a recent FCC decision that may affect PEG funding. And actually, we'll go, I'll, I'll discuss that a bit in council direction as well. I just wanted to mention that I had left that off my written report, which will be available in the packet. So do we have any, anything, anything else going on, dog parks or otherwise, from the council? Okay. All right, moving on to legislative report. Do we have anything? City Attorney?
No legislative report, other than, than just, and stealing a little bit of your thunder, Mayor, the Federal Communications Commission, I think you were talking about the order that they just came out with regarding cable operators and franchise fees that they pay in California. No longer do you have franchise agreements for the cable operators. You, you have the CPUC handles all the franchising, and you get a certain amount of franchise fees, just 5%. You also have, we just adopted an ordinance implementing a 1% PEG, PEG funding, and those, those PEG funding, PEG fees are the public educational and governmental fees that are used to be able to stream our meetings, to have our meetings on YouTube and whatnot. But we are looking to see if that order actually changed any of that. I know it's a federal order, but we're looking into whether it had any effects on, especially on California, and on what we currently get.
So we'll be watching that very closely, possibly working with the League of Cities to make sure we protect that, if indeed it's in jeopardy. But, and also just, so folks know, our local Congressman Huffman is on the Communications Committee, so he will be a good person to connect with if we need to address this issue. Anything else on legislative? Okay. Council direction on future items. Does anybody else have any, anything for future items? Okay, I'm seeing none. So just to, just to recap, we talked about looking at possible income and future items for an election item, for income for the city, but also just looking at all potential sources of income that, that we might be eligible for. And then also, we'll be monitoring that FCC decision and see if we need to take action on it. Okay, so anybody else have any, anything else? Okay, seeing none, then we will adjourn it to our regular meeting on Wednesday, September 11th.